So we have our full complement here. There we go. Staff are recording. We're good to go.
We are good to go.
Okay, all right. The time is ten oh two. I'll call the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four Planning Board Meeting to Order. We are joined by our Vice Chair, Vice Chair Bailey. Good morning, Ms. Bailey.
Good morning.
And we're joined as well by Commissioner Washington.
Good morning.
And Commissioner Geraldo.
Good morning.
And Commissioner Dooner.
Hello.
And I'm Chair Shapiro. Moving forward to the business at hand, please note that the deadline for all participant pre-registration and for our submission of materials and exhibits was twelve noon on the Tuesday before this Planning Board meeting. Registered speakers may join the meeting with a link provided in the email provided by the Planning Board Office or listen by phone by utilizing the call-in number provided in the email. And of course, anyone may tune in to watch the Planning Board meeting via live stream. If you wish to speak or become a person of record, you may use our online web form. In addition to the commissioners, we are joined by our Principal Counsel, David Warner. We also have Jessica Jones, our Planning Board Administrator, and Joe Parsons, our Senior Technical Hearing Writer, and James Hunt, the Division Chief for the Development Review Division. Good morning, James. And as always, we're joined by Kenneth Flanagan and Ryan Croner, helping us with technology behind the scenes. Thanks to you both. First item on our agenda would be item two. I would look for motion to approve the draft minutes of January eighteen, twenty twenty four.
Motion to approve draft minutes.
Second.
A motion by Vice Chair Bailey, a second by Commissioner Geraldo. Discussion of the motion? I'll call the roll. Vice Chair Bailey.
But I.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Dooner.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
The I vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero. Next, we'll go to item three A in our agenda. These are legislative updates and approvals, and I think we have Ms. Borden who's going to be walking us through these. Our General Counsel, Ms. Borden, is here and present. We have a number of items, and if you can be clear upfront with which of these items we're going to be briefed on and which ones we're looking to take action on, et cetera, et cetera, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Deborah Borden, General Counsel, for the record. And I have a number of bills before you, but most of them this week are pretty easy and straightforward. The one bill that is rather complicated is the first bill that I want to talk to you about. It's just a briefing. It's to get you ready for a vote next week that we hope will be ready for. It's Senate Bill four eight four. This bill literally just came out two days ago. We just got the bill draft two days ago. But we've been talking about it for a while. This is the governor's bill on affordable housing. The governor has an initiative this year, legislative initiative this year, to promote affordable housing in the state. And he has basically three prongs to this effort. A land use prong, a funding prong, and then a policy prong. Let's call it that. So this is the land use prong, and of course, that's what we are really laser focused on because it is it is interesting. It is an attempt by the state to do what we do at the local level, which is land use regulation and incentivizing development. And they're trying to do it at the state level. So it is complex. And we are going to be working with all of the partners. I'm sorry. Did I have a question? Okay. We're going to be working with all the partners, including the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level, our two housing departments at the county level, as well as Mako. This is going to be a massive effort to try to come to consensus around some amendments for this bill. The challenge is, of course, that the bill is talking about development standards and bonus density. And it's trying to do that in a way that will apply in a fundamental way to every single county and municipality that has a zoning ordinance. Well, our zoning ordinances are all very different, and our zoning ordinance in Prince George's is different from our zoning ordinance in Montgomery, and our process is different. You know, and when you compare our processes in Prince George's and Montgomery to say Garrett County, very different, right? We have very different issues on the ground that we try to address through our zoning ordinances. And so, you know, the state imposing something that will have, you know, a non-detrimental effect across the board, yeah, that's very tricky. And so we need to make sure that, you know, not only is the intent, you know, to promote affordable housing, not only is that realized, but also that that none of our current efforts are diminished by this bill. So we're working on amendments now. We're working as a team with both planning departments. And we hope to have a set of amendments to you next week at your meeting. And we can go into more detail at that time. I just wanted to give you a preview because we've been waiting for this bill, and we finally just got it two days ago. So stay tuned. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it. I'm not asking for a vote on this bill, Senate Bill four eighty four at this time. Any questions?
We have a couple of questions on how it unfolds. Typically, when we see these sorts of efforts, it's more on the funding side and not on the how do you get it done side. So it doesn't put in restrictions about what kinds of properties or what a local municipality can or can't do. So it might be useful to encourage them to split it, split those ideas in half. If they want to address both of them, they could. But think about a bill that would address just one thing at a time and not just be super comprehensive, because then it becomes very complicated in practice later on. So if they want to create like a trust fund that would incentivize certain properties or affordable homes and certain kinds of developments, they could do that. But then they would do a separate act or legislative piece that would restrict the locality's ability to impact certain things, because I think that would be a little bit cleaner in implementation and resolving stuff and just how it happens. I also just procedurally, when I was looking through the bill, it wasn't clear to me how some of this stuff is going to unfold or why certain things were picked. Like having like the twenty five or fifty percent numbers just is not it's not clear to me like why those are the right numbers to have and if they should be lower or higher. And it just kind of struck me as just kind of random guesses, just like, oh, it sounds good. So we're just going to put twenty five percent, which is very dangerous from a policy perspective if they aren't informed numbers. Because to me, reading through this, it doesn't strike me as being informed at all. And I say that from my also sort of outside seat and working at the federal level on housing stuff is that I want to see good policies come in and some ones that are thoughtful and that can actually move the needle in affordable housing. And parts of this just didn't strike me as as carefully put together as it could be to really have a good impact as they're trying to achieve. So I'm trying to be kind of constructive on that. The location of the rail station also just struck me as just sort of odd. Like, I know that they're trying to figure out transit oriented development, but it just seemed just sort of random. Like, why rail? Like, and how do we interpret rail? Like, so if I'm located next to like one of the railways that just brings products down to DC, is that fine? I'm like, I'm really close to a workstation that is only used like very randomly. I don't think that that would necessarily be the intention of what they're trying to do. Maybe it is, but thinking through like, how do we, if the goal is to get it around transit oriented development, how do we define that a little bit more broadly instead of so specific to that nature? Maybe it's not just rail, but it's like bus stations and other kinds of public transit, things that we want people to be around at different kinds of densities to just be a little more flexible. And then the other kind of aspect that I wasn't really sure about is just implementation. When I see affordable housing projects, a lot of times in legislation about affordable housing projects, they will often say that they want to have like a deed restriction for a certain number of years, or you have to maintain a certain percentage of properties that are affordable at a certain rate or whatever. But there's no there's no help on how do we actually make sure that happens going forward, inclusive of this county, that when we have these sorts of restrictions in place, how do we know day two after this, after a project gets built, that it actually remains that? And it's all, do we want to have the same units that were affordable remain affordable? And who's checking on this? Because the data often isn't collected. And it's just sort of like, yeah, you have to maintain this percentage. Do you do it annually? Who does it? Where does that data go? How do you ensure it's actually enforced and it actually happens after the project starts? Isn't something that that happens very well. And I think there needs a little more thought about who would actually do that enforcement if we really want this to be lasting. We should make sure that we go back and we check once a year or do things like that. But then that means that we have to have some sort of a mechanism for doing that and assignment if he does it, because you can't just make this law at a state level and assume that localities are going to be able to do this and know how to do this and have the staffing to do it if you don't provide funding and training and stuff for it.
Yes, understood. And you are bringing up a lot of the things that we have already discussed between our two planning departments. One of the things that is really critical is that, you know, our two planning departments has they collectively have a huge amount of experience in trying to incentivize, you know, fair, safe, equitable, affordable housing in our communities. In Montgomery, they've had the MPDU program for fifty years, I think. So they have a lot of, you know, real firsthand knowledge as to how to do this type of programming in terms of, you know, how long should a unit stay in the affordable housing program? And how do you do that? How do you check to make sure that that happens? And the percentages, what percentages work, what percentages, you know, don't tend to get the participation that you're looking for, you know? You know, when have you gone too far, in other words? You know, so we have a lot of this data and information and real world experience that we're going to try to bring to this bill. That's the point. But we do understand that, you know, we are, while we're the two largest counties in the state, we're not the whole state, and everybody else has different issues. They're starting from a different starting point when it comes to looking at this bill, and we recognize that, and we know that we're going to have to, you know, work with all of our partners to try to make sure that this bill you know, is productive for all of us, you know, to the extent that it can be. So we're going to try to do that.
Yeah, let me just add just a quick bit to join with the conversation. I mean, the political impetus behind this is more related to jurisdictions that have been pushing back against affordable housing, which isn't us and isn't Montgomery County, but the practical impact of the bill is more oriented toward us. By, to your point, Commissioner Dooner, by talking about rail, fifty percent, by a rough definition of what they mean by rail, fifty percent of all the targeted sites are in Prince George's or Montgomery County for the whole state. And yet, we're actually not really the, you know, problem around this because we have pretty robust incentives for affordable housing in both counties. So that's part of what we're working with Mako and the state on is to better, you know, Commissioner, to some of your points, to better target this. And then there are all those issues that you mentioned around enforceability and measuring. So it's a mess. The intention is certainly good, and so we want to work with, obviously, we want to work with the governor and his team and come up with a productive version of this.
Yes, so stay tuned. This is not, you know, the first time you'll see this. We do expect this bill to go through several iterations before, you know, the end. You know, and we hope that we'll end up with a, you know, with a bill that will work. So, you know, we're going to try to make sure that that happens.
Other questions, Commissioners, on this item? All right, so there's no action recommended on this at this point, so you can keep moving.
Correct. Okay, so I will move to the next item, House Bill three. It's another housing, affordable housing bill. This is the year of affordable housing. So this bill is by Delegate Stewart in the House, and we have been actually talking with Delegate Stewart since December about this bill, and we have developed some some comments and some proposed amendments for the bill. We have, let's see, included it in your package. Yeah, it's titled HB three Delegate Stewart Housing Package and then CPCC Comments. So basically, the bill tries to implement and establish expedited development review process as a minimum base for all counties in the state to promote affordable housing. And it also has a component where the delegate is trying to collect data on permits for affordable housing, you know, the number of permits issued, et cetera. And we have spoken with his staff about the language in here because it was a little unclear as to whether he was talking about actual permits or talking about development review applications. So we wanted to work with him on that language to clarify some of the items, but our comments are are included, and so we would like to get a vote for support with amendments, amendments that are in line with the comments that we submitted.
Your questions, Commissioners, on this item? No questions, then let's take action on them one by one. So I'd look for a motion. Recommendation from staff is to support with amendments. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we support HB three with the amendments as outlined by council.
Second.
My Commissioner Washington, the second by Commissioner Geraldo. Discussion? No discussion. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
But I.
Commissioner Dooner.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero. Thank you, Ms. Borden.
Thank you. Next up, we have HB seven. This is also a bill from Delegate Stewart, and it is on the funding side of affordable housing. So this bill would establish the Housing Innovation Pilot Program in the Department of Housing and Community Development to provide funds for certain mixed income and cross-subsidized housing. We think that this is, you know, a good idea, that it's in line with our goals for affordable housing, and we always would like to see, you know, additional funding and additional opportunities for nonprofits to do affordable housing in the state. So we think this is an easy ask for support.
No questions. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and support HB seven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Washington and the second by Commissioner Geraldo. Discussion? I will call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
But I.
Commissioner Dooner.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero.
Thank you. Next up, again, with affordable housing, this is the day for affordable housing, I guess. So this is a, not an unexpected policy addition to the land use article that describes what needs to go into our comprehensive plans, also known as our master plans. This is just a twist on something that's already in there. So there's already a housing element that is required to be in our master plans, and this would specify that not only do you have to have a housing element that talks about housing, but it also needs to have affirmatively discussed in your master plans how you're going to further your goals for affordable housing in your master plan area. So it doesn't require any implementation, and it doesn't require any funding. It just requires you to have the conversation and note it down in your master plan. So again, we think this is a good idea. This is a policy, pure policy issue. And we do think actually that we're doing this already in our master plans because this is really top of mind for everyone in both of our counties. So we would ask for support for House Bill seventeen.
Questions, Commissioners? No questions. I'll look for a motion. Oh, there is a question?
Yeah, just, is this House Bill seventeen and companion Senate Bill two seventy four? Are you going to take them up separately, or you want one vote on?
Oh, one vote is fine. I'm sorry. Did we put this in twice? It is Senate Bill, it's cross filed as Senate Bill two seventy four.
Yeah. Okay, with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and approve House Bill seventeen and companion Senate Bill two seventy four.
Second.
My question, my question, Washington, the second by Commissioner Geraldo. Discussion on the motion? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Bailey.
But I.
Commissioner Dooner.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have House Bill two forty one. This bill would add to what is currently our priority funding area programming and, you know, base. So the state identifies certain qualities that make a certain area, priority funding area for state funding. And then they target those areas with particular funding for particular needs. So this, again, is coming along, you know, with all of the other bills for a deep dive into affordable housing in areas that have been previously and historically disadvantaged. And so they want to identify sort of within those priority funding areas, what they're calling just communities. And they're really just looking at it with an equity lens to say, you know, you know, areas that are within these priority funding areas that are historically disenfranchised, historically underfunded, underinvested, we want to target funds for those communities. So again, this doesn't have any particular you know, fiscal impact to us, but we do think it's right in line with our current affordable housing and current equity approach in both counties. And we would certainly like to support House Bill two forty one.
Thank you, Ms. Borden. Questions? No questions. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and approve House Bill two forty one.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Washington and the second by Commissioner Geraldo. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
But I.
Commissioner Dooner.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero. And one last one that isn't related to housing.
Yes, one last bill. Senate Bill one fifty one. It only applies in Prince George's County. It is a bill filed by Senator Muse. And this bill would establish a work group on health and wellness in Prince George's to review and evaluate certain information, to make recommendations related to health and wellness for our county residents and generally promote, you know, public health and and well-being in the county. And we think that this is a wonderful idea. We have proposed to Senator Muse a single amendment that would add us to the work group. And Senator Muse, as of yesterday, said that he would be happy to do that. So with that amendment, we would like to support this bill.
Discussion, Commissioners? I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept staff's recommendation and approve SB one fifty one with the noted amendment.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Washington and a second by Commissioner Dooner. I missed who did that.
No. But that's fine.
Okay. The motion is second. No discussion. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
But I.
Commissioner Dooner.
But I, and just for your knowledge, Chair Shapiro, a couple of years back, we had a healthy food initiative that we did, and we had some really nice briefings by the American Heart Association and others in the community. And it got us really on some interesting areas that we hadn't thought about, like the vending machines and different things that we have across our facilities with both counties. And it led to some really nice changes with our vendors and what we were supplying to county residents that were great and are making it a lot more healthy when people are at our facilities and trying to use those when they're in between like activities and stuff, particularly for kids who may not have other options or may not really appreciate as much or understand as much about healthy sort of actions. So to the extent that we can share that sort of information with the committee later on, I think that'd be great to kind of embark on the discussions of how we can continue to move that program and things like that forward for the county.
Right, helpful here. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to dovetail on that. I was listening recently, and I don't know if this is occurring at our facilities or if in our schools, but there's schools and organizations, schools and institutions in other areas that are offering energy drinks at high school and the elementary school level. And the discussion that I heard on NPR was that, you know, that they can be very dangerous for children. So maybe that's something that we need to look at in the future as well.
I appreciate all the thoughts on this, and it sounds like, Ms. Borden, that we will we will have lots of interest in this, and I'm glad that we're going to have representation. I'm assuming it passes. So thank you. And we're still in the midst of the vote. Commissioner Dooner, you did vote aye, correct? And I'll vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero. And I believe that includes all of our legislative items for the day, correct?
Yes, it does. Until next week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Borden. All right, Commissioners, moving on. We are moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to oppose staff's recommendations on items four A and B? Are any board members wish to discuss any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, I will look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, after consideration of the record for items number four A and four B, I move adopting the staff's final approval of the items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff.
Second.
A motion by Vice Chair Bailey, a second by Commissioner Washington. Discussion? No discussion. I will call the roll. Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Dooner.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
I vote aye as well. The ayes have it five zero. On to our regular agenda items. First is item five. This is a detailed site plan DSP oh one oh oh two dash oh four Library Apartments Toledo Road Garage Development. This is actually a request for a continuance to February twenty second, twenty twenty four. We have Mr. Huang will be giving a brief staff presentation, and then we may hear from Mr. Tedesco as well. We have no one else who signed up to speak. Mr. Wong, take it away.
And let me do the sound check and also the slices wrong. There's an updated one. This is the incorrect slide.
We can hear you fine.
Okay. So, but the Mr. Chair, the slide shown on your screen is not correct.
Okay. Give staff one sec to see if we can find the updated one.
Yes, this is correct.
Okay, all right, nice and easy.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair and member of the Planning Board. For the record, I'm Emery Huang with Urban Design Section. Item number five shown on your screen is detailed site plan DSP dash zero one zero zero two dash zero four Library Apartments, which seeks to amend DSP dash zero one zero zero two to allow for the demodestation of the To to allow for the demod- demolition of the. Have the existing parking garage and the construction of the seven-story multifamily buildings with two hundred and nine residential units. While retaining the other half the parking garage. The applicants have requested a continuous till February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. To allow the additional coordination between the applicants and the staff. The applicants has previously provided a seventy days extension to the planning board action limit. Which now expires on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Staff recommended their planning board approve the request of continuous to February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. This will be concluded staff presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong, commissioners, questions for staff? No questions, Mr. Tedesco, anything you wanna add? Record, please.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the planning board, Matthew Tedesco, on behalf of the owner and applicant uh, on this case. Although I was the only case, uh, DRD case on the app, on the agenda today. We are continuing to work with your staff, we would submit on our January tenth letter. Uh, we are very anxious and excited to bring this case back before you, we are um, kind of. Dovetailing on some of the conversations you all were having with respect to. Housing and redevelopment, especially around TOD areas, we're excited about this project, but. Obviously, the additional time will allow us to continue to work uh, with staff, I wanna thank Mr. Wong for his uh, review up to this date. And we look forward, hopefully, on February twenty-second, if this continuance is granted, to present this case to you all. Um, and with that, we would respectfully request uh, approval of the continuance as um, requested in our January tenth letter.
Thank you, Mr. Tedesco, commissioners, questions for the applicants? No questions? Commissioner Doerner.
And this is tangential, so it's not related to my decision on this case or anything, but um, across the street from there, Mr. Tedesco, is a bus stop. Um, like just to the northeast side of there. And there, there's a family that's been living out of there for a while, I don't know if. You or maybe for Chair Shapiro, if if there's somebody in the county services that could just go and kind of check on them, just make sure that if there are services that we can provide, that this could be provided. Um, I just sort of thought about it as I was looking at the map, it's right across from the library. Um, and I just wanna make sure that we, we're availing our county assistance to those folks on to the extent that we can. Um, just being being good neighbors.
Yeah, Ms. Commissioner, uh, Doerner, I was not aware of that, I'll bring that to the attention of my client, uh, the property owner as well. And whatever information we can glean and and we can provide to them, we would be happy to do it. So. Let me um, let me uh, undertake that effort on my end and then certainly if I can work, if there's a need to work with. Other members of the planning board or your staff, we can coordinate for sure.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. Okay, if there's no other questions, uh, there's no one else who has signed up to speak, uh, commissioners, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for continuance for DSP dash zero one zero zero two. Dash zero four to continue to the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four planning board.
Got a motion by Commissioner Washington, a second by Commissioner.
Vice Chair.
Oh, the Vice Chair, alright, uh, Vice Chair Bailey, discussion on the motion. Uh, no discussion, I'll call the role, Vice, uh, Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Doerner.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote aye.
I vote aye as well, the eyes have it five zero, thank you, Mr. Wong, thank you, Mr. Tedesco, much appreciated. Finally, on our agenda, we have item six, this is Community Planning Division, this is a presentation of the planning department's recommended. Priority capital improvement projects. Uh, to implement Plan twenty thirty-five, Mr. Rowe will be presenting. Uh, and Mr. Rowe, I think you can sort of frame this a little bit, I'm sure you will frame this a little bit for us, why this is before us. Uh, as you uh, bring it up to us, so good to see you and take it away. And we have Mr. Berlage as well, our deputy planning director.
Alright, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you fine.
Great, good morning, Chair Shapiro and members of the board, for the record, this is Scott Rowe, Community Planning Division. I'm here today to present the planning department's recommendations for priority capital improvements to implement Plan twenty thirty-five. Next slide, please. As you know, you can see here, Plan twenty thirty-five directs future growth in Prince George's County to its thirty-four designated centers. Plan twenty thirty-five also contains a strategic implementation program that recommends the prioritization of public improvements. Uh, in the identified downtowns and in the innovation corridor. First round downtowns, as you know, are downtown Largo, New Carrollton and Prince George's Plaza, otherwise known as Heightsville Crossing. Uh, the innovation corridor consists of the US One Corridor from the Belt, the Agricultural Research Center, south to University of Maryland. Uh, and then east on Maryland one ninety-three to the NASA Goddard Space Flight Center in Greenbelt. And it includes the College Park UMD Metro Station, the Greenbelt Metro Station of the Discovery District. Um, the second round downtowns are Branch Avenue in Sula, next slide, please. Plan twenty thirty-five strategic implementation program uh, recommends three critical initiatives you're all familiar with. Um, updating the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations was obviously the top priority and it's substantially complete, but ongoing adjustments and tweaks is needed. The two next highest priorities are the focus of this presentation. Focusing investment in public sector attention on the downtowns and the innovation corridor and coordinating with. Implementing agencies to review their app annual capital improvement programs and to work with them. To ensure that investments are directed towards implementing the recommendations of Plan twenty thirty-five. Today's present, we we came to you initially with this to present the idea in October. Um, in today's presentation and the associated memorandum and the backup package identify. Those projects that the planning department believes will go the farthest, the fastest in advancing Plan twenty thirty-five's recommendations. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendations all contain a common theme, investing in the necessary infrastructure that supports targeted growth. Creating places where people want to be and demonstrating the county and the state's commitment to creating great places to live, work, play. Visit and learn in Prince George's County. Next slide, please. Of course, all agencies are responsible for developing their own capital budgets. The following recommendations simply reflect the planning department's guidance as to which projects will best advance Plan twenty thirty-five. And will have the highest impact in the near term. Next slide, please. So the first recommendations um, really apply to all of the downtowns of the innovation corridor. First of all, it's important that each location have a comprehensive branding and wayfinding program. With distinctive name, logo and brand that clearly identifies to a visitor or resident that you're in a distinct place, a signage. That helps people get around the center, whether they're on foot, on a bicycle, driving or getting around some other way. It's also important that the county as a whole. But especially these locations have high-quality bus stops. These are areas of the county that are expected to develop at densities that support high-frequency bus service. Um, and all stops should have at a minimum signage, information on upcoming buses. Uh, shelters that protect uh, people that are waiting for a bus from rain, heat, wind, uh, trash receptacles. Um, and seating, next slide, please. For downtown Largo, uh, the necessary priority capital improvements are really to retrofit the current suburban road system. Which was designed to get cars into and out of events at the Capital Center. Into a high-quality network of pedestrian-oriented complete streets. Uh, the key corridors are listed here, some of these are already in the current county's capital improvement program. And so we hope to see movement on those shortly. Excuse me, uh, another key step in transforming downtown Largo into a true downtown. Is the creation of attractive public gathering spaces that encourage social interaction, recreation and design excellence throughout the county. Creating new public plazas at the downtown Largo Metro Station, the Wayne K. Curry Administration Building. And the University of Maryland Capital Region Medical Center will begin to create destinations for residents and visitors to gather and enjoy downtown Largo. A plaza at the Curry Building is already in the current county CIP. And should come to fruition in the next years, the next couple of years. Efforts to construct an amphitheater currently funded in the CIP. Present an opportunity to bring thousands of visitors a month to downtown Largo. Uh, which will create increased opportunities for economic activity and new residential growth. Next slide, please. Connectivity to and around Largo is critical to its success. The Central Avenue Connector Trail, of course, which you're familiar with, creates a unique opportunity to connect communities along the blue and silver lines to downtown Largo and also to Washington DC. And is a high priority that's funded in the CIP. Uh, the map shown here on the slide illustrates other pedestrian and trail improvements that could improve connectivity within Largo. And help make the entire area more accessible and attractive. Constructing a new interchange at the Capitol Beltway and Medical Center Drive has the potential to improve accessibility to downtown Largo. Uh, for special events and to increase connectivity for communities west of the Beltway. The planning department and DPWNT are continuing to work with the State Highway Administration to improve. Initial designs for better pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. Next slide, please. So the federal government, state, county and private sector are currently investing in huge improvements at the New Carrollton Transit Center. Including improvements to the station itself to make it a more inviting and easy-to-use intermodal facility. Uh, and jointly developing a mix of uses next to the station. Uh, also, of course, work is progressing uh, on completing the Purple Line, whose western terminus is at New Carrollton. Additional improvements can increase New Carrollton's attractiveness for future development and investment. Um, including improving the pedestrian and bicyclist experience along eighty-fifth Avenue and Ellen Road. Um, and creating new public open spaces, both at the northern entrance to. The New Carrollton Transit Center at Annapolis Road and Harkins Road and then down at the end of Harkins Road at the IRS Building and its intersection with Ellen Road. Future development beyond, onto the south, uh, beyond Garden City Drive requires strategic and thoughtful study of the lower Beaver Dam Creek. Uh, watershed, next slide, please. Strategic and thoughtful study of the lower Beaver Dam Creek watershed and improve control of stormwater quality and quantity. A comprehensive study of this watershed, which um, could be partnered with an ongoing stream restoration that's currently funded and be undertaken by the Clean Water Partnership. Will help facilitate growth not only here at New Carrollton, but potentially at the Landover and Chevrolet Metro Stations downstream as well. Next slide, please. These things continue at Heightsville Crossing, retrofitting the two main streets here, East West Highway. And Belcrest Road into complete streets are critical to creating the type of attractive and safe walkable environment to create, necessary to create a downtown. Uh, both projects are contained within existing safety prod- programs funded. In the county CIP and the state's consolidated transportation program. Uh, the ongoing construction of the nine-point stormwater management facility along Wells Run. Um, which is across the street from the library, the proposed library apartments. Uh, makes redevelopment easier uh, by creating a regional facility that lessens the necessity of individual redevelopers to store stormwater on-site. Um, and so one thing we recommend is a similar comprehensive study and possible regional facility on the west side of Heightsville Crossing. That that part that drains into the northwest branch of the Anacostia River, which will help manage stormwater on that end and also. Uh, coincidentally, um, assist with the stormwater management challenges downstream at West Heightsville and further downstream as well. Now, um, there are two current public open spaces in this area that are underutilized. Uh, one is at, on the south side of the bridge shown on the slide. Uh, on East West Highway at the metro station and then another one is on America Boulevard at Freedom Way. A a concentrated, focused, people-centered investment at these two locations could activate these spaces and create destinations. For residents and visitors to gather, creating a better sense of place throughout the transit district. Next slide, please. Innovation corridor presents a golden opportunity for public and private investment to unlock its vast research and development potential. Uh, completing the Purple Line through the Discovery District and the UMD Campus and constructing a full interchange on the Beltway at the Greenbelt Metro Metro Station. Can dramat- excuse me, dramatically increase the region's ability to access and connect to the Innovation Corridor. Um, constructing a shared use path to the Greenbelt Metro Station can increase transit ridership. While retrofitting Greenbelt Road and Campus Drive as complete streets will make those areas safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. Um, and more attractive to potential developers and redevelopers. As with other metro station locations in the county. Stormwater management's critical in these areas to ensure that these areas that have the highest growth potential have low to no flood risk. Um, comprehensive studies of the Indian Creek Watershed near the Greenbelt Metro Station and along Paint Branch near the College Park Metro Station. Um, and construction of the urban conservation park in the Discovery District that was recommended. In the twenty fifteen College Park Riverdale Park Transit District Development Plan can do a lot to alleviate flood risk in these areas. Next slide, please. Improvements in our second round downtowns, uh, Branch Avenue in Sutland. Uh, can really go far to advance Plan twenty thirty-five's goal of equitable transit-oriented development at these locations. Similar themes, uh, retrofitting uh, Capital Gateway Drive, Offroad, Old Soaper Road and Offway. Uh, can increase opportunities for people to live on one side of these streets and access jobs, retail and transit on the other side. Uh, safely, um, at the station itself is a great opportunity to construct a parking garage that can free up. This current surface parking lot for additional development right at the station. While integrating, um, as plans continue for the Southern Maryland Regional Transit System, which is supposed to terminate at Branch Avenue. Uh, integrating whatever the terminal station of that ends up being. To into the metro station, so people not only can transfer to the metro station or to buses, but also maybe shop. Or eat or drink along the way, um, really creates an additional opportunity uh, to increase ridership and economic activity at the station. Next slide, please. Finally, um, at uh, Sula. Uh, continued public investment uh, as funded in the current CIP at Town Square, at Sula Federal Center. Can create a range of amenities, housing choices and pedestrian accessible retail, retail services and amenities necessary. To continue this development's rapid growth as a choice community in Prince George's County. Something that will help us along is retrofitting Silver Hill Road, Sutland Road and Swan Road. For safer pedestrian and bicycle access, uh, which is key to unlocking the community's potential and increasing access to the metro station. Which is on the other side of the Sula Federal Center from uh, Town Square. General Services Administration is continuing to express interest in partnering with the county to create a signature public gathering place. At the intersection of Silver Hill and Sutland Road, so will enhance that intersection status as really the heart and main, main intersection in Sula. Um, next slide, please. So with this report, with the report contained within this, uh, the memorandum that was attached, uh, the next steps are really to. Present these recommendations to the county council and the county executive. And to partner agencies and continue to work with them to get these projects into future CIPs, the Conference of Transportation Program. And work together to implement Plan twenty thirty-five. Next slide. And that concludes staff's presentation. At this time, I'd ask the board's approval to transmit the recommendations to. The county council and county executive, uh, and I'll take any questions that you have.
If there's questions, comments, thoughts, reactions.
Mr. Chair, I I'm particularly happy uh, to see that. The plans for uh, the Branch Avenue and Sutland, but with Branch Avenue, you know, metro has that, the the station there. And I guess when it was designed, it was designed with being car-centric and they have this gigantic parking lot. Right, as soon as you get out of the metro station. And as a result of the way it's been developed, I I believe that it's been difficult to get retail there, so the elimination of that parking lot. And being able to develop it and put a, 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 I guess, a a covered parking lot would, should help. Tremendously in developing that area as was originally intended. But so, thank, thank you, Mr. Rowe, and thank you for the planning staff, similarly with with Sutland.
Agreed, and thank you. Uh, other questions?
Yeah. Questions slash comments on the innovation quarter, um, one? So, one of my comments is, unlike the wayfinding stuff, I I went through the Greenbelt Metro the other day. Um, or the other weekend and. It wasn't easy for me to figure out what's around there. So I came off of the highway and I went in there and I couldn't figure out how to get down to Greenbelt Road, just looking around. Um, you can use Google Maps and figure it out, but there's none, it actually took me back on the highway. Um, back over Route one and then south down to Greenbelt Road, which is like not very direct, but it it can connect over. Um, but the the signage around there was was really poor, so I think in terms of the wayfinding. Um, if we want people who are coming, if we're gonna draw people into the Greenbelt Metro and we want them potentially to. Go grab food or shop or do whatever in the area around there, before they go back home, um, or go elsewhere. We need to improve the signage to make that possible, um, because it it just, it's non-existent. we need to improve the signage to make that possible, because it just, it's non-existent, basically. It's just, there's a couple of signs that mention places nearby, but it's not at all obvious how to get to those places when you're in the parking lot and trying to figure out which way to go. And then another sort of question on the reconstruction of the One Ninety Three to complete streets. I just wanted to find out if you could give a little bit more color to the complete street part of that, because when I'm, when I'm biking around in that area, I have no way of safely getting east to west on, on Greenbelt Road right now, and my, my son goes to school over there. There was a time when the school classes weren't coming, and I was at home, and I had the option of, of riding him up there and, and doing that, and it would have taken me like thirty-five minutes or something, and it would have been fine. But I decided not to, because it was a little bit weather hairy, like just not a great day outside, and I wasn't sure, I wasn't confident that the cars would see me and I would get clipped and stuff in the sidewalks are just horrendous around there to ride on. I could have taken trail up to there really nicely to get to Greenbelt Road, but it just wasn't safe enough for me to feel comfortable, so I kept him home the whole day. That's not something that I felt good about, and I'm hoping that we're gonna, the complete streets are gonna be nice, because you can't, you can go north, north to south really easily on a couple of trail systems around there, but you can't go east to west and get to places. And that's a problem, because it's not easy to get around to, to the city of Greenbelt from where I'm at. And, and I've had similar kind of instances where I wanted to drive him or bike him up to like a summer camp that he goes up over there, and my wife said, no way, you're not taking him up there just because it's not safe on the streets. And, and that's unfortunate situation. So can you describe a little bit better about what that's going to entail and how it hopefully will increase safety?
I think the key, the key initiative that's going on right now is that the city of Greenbelt's been working with SJA for the last couple of years to kind of revision that segment of Greenbelt Road that's in the city to calm traffic, add bicycle facilities, and improve the pedestrian environment. We're also looking at the entire corridor through the ongoing master plan of transportation to try to make that, make the entire corridor a little bit more, safer to walk and bike along. I think that while we don't have a final design concept, given the fact that it's a six-to-eight-lane highway that is often underutilized except during the peak periods, and with the amount of redevelopment that is anticipated, especially around Beltway Plaza Mall, I think that what would, is most likely to happen is some sort of road diet that takes out the outside lanes and creates a buffered bicycle lane and, and the potential for additional sidewalk. Anytime you have to move the curbs on a road reconstruction, it's very expensive. So that sometimes makes the sidewalk a little bit more challenging. But as far as a bicycle accommodation, I think there's a lot of impetus right now and a lot of advocacy from the bicyclist community and from the city of Greenbelt, town of Bowen Heights, and College Park, really to make that corridor safer to bike along, because you hit the nail on the head. Finding those east-west connections in that area are really challenging, and we have great north-south connections. There's a lot of interest in connecting along One Ninety Three, you know, the Anacostia Trail Network and the WBNA Trail. And so there, there's quite a bit of opportunities there, and so that we're looking at that through the master plan of transportation, and stay tuned.
Other questions? So my, my big question is, I'm a bit confused around one piece of how this is being presented. I mean, the, the, the audience here is the council and the county executive and other departments, is that right? Or primarily the council?
Yeah, actually, let me, let me take a shot at that, Derek Berlage, Acting Deputy Director. So let's look at the big picture for a second. Most of the growth and development that is anticipated in Plan Twenty Thirty Five, and that we as a county want to see happen, will be built by the private sector. We all know that. But in order for the private sector to build the kind of development that we want to see, and the places we want to see it, it is critical that the public sector prime the pump by providing the investment in critical public infrastructure that's needed to incentivize and support the private sector development that's going to come. And there are many agencies that need to build that infrastructure. It's the Maryland Department of Transportation, it's various agencies of county government, some of it is actually our own Department of Parks and Recreation, and some of it is WMA. And the competition for CIP dollars, of course, is always, you know, tremendous. And every agency has difficulty making choices when it proposes its CIP, and we understand that each of the agencies I just mentioned will, you know, propose their own CIP that they think is the right CIP to propose. But we think it's critical that the planning department and the planning board provide recommendations to all of those agencies as they prepare their CIP to say, if we really want Plan Twenty Thirty Five to be realized, these are the investments that your agencies need to try to move to the top of the list. And so they are the audience initially, and then obviously the county executive and the county council, which have ultimate decision-making power over most of those CIP items, are the audience as well. And, and the planning board actually did do this once before, a couple of years after Plan Twenty Thirty Five was adopted. This is the second time, because we think it's well worth reminding everyone that these public infrastructure investments are critical for Plan Twenty Thirty Five to happen, critical to support the private sector development. And we want to, you know, there's been some evolving in what, what the priorities are. So we're now going to, you know, hopefully use this information to start a dialogue with the agencies and the council, the executives. And hopefully, some of these will move a little higher up the list than they were before.
Well, thank you for that. It's very helpful. And, and so but what's lost for me in the presentation then is distinguishing between projects that are actually quite far along, and there's some measure of commitment to. Some of these are happening, is the short of it. There's no distinction in the presentation over which ones are happening and what stage they're in. And so I think what can be missed is a little bit of taps on the back. You know, making that distinction between what's happening and what, what really needs to happen, I think is one of the most powerful things we can do. It feels, I mean, the presentation is powerful and spot on. I don't agree with, I don't disagree with any of the, what are considered priorities. But, yeah. I think it matters to say, you know, at Silver Hill Road, there's a planned place to do the street widening, and they're this far along, because that actually is the case, as an example, right? Or, you know, that's, that kind of thing.
Your point is well taken. The status of each of these items actually is in, in the backup, but of course, it's the PowerPoint that people will focus on. So we would be happy, I'm sure, to have Mr. Rowe add, add to this presentation in the way you suggest when we take it to the next level.
I think, you know, let, because how you do that really matters, right? So it's a, it's a longer conversation. It doesn't stop me from being supportive of this, moving it along, right? I don't, I don't have an issue there. But I do want to be crystal clear with you focusing on the audience and what's going to be most helpful for them as we present this.
We'll read you loud and clear, and we'll work with you and your, and your staff to make sure that that happens. Thank you for that suggestion.
Other questions, comments? None? Then we are, this is an action item, so staff is looking for us to approve this. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the transmittal of the Priority Capital Improvements Projects Report to the county council and county executive. Second.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Washington, second by Vice Chair Bailey. Under discussion, the only thing I'd say is just to reflect for the record that we assume that our support also includes the direction that there's a little bit more clarity in the presentation related to the status of the projects, and making sure that that's more front and center.
Absolutely, and I.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I definitely associate myself with your comments. I pass through that Sula community almost daily, and I can see that some of those actions are occurring, and so we'd like to reflect what is already happening in, in our report, so. Because the job is being done in some instances.
Exactly. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. I will call the roll. Commissioner Washington.
I vote I.
Vice Chair Bailey.
Vote I.
Commissioner Doherty.
Vote I. Thanks for all the good work.
Commissioner Geraldo.
I vote I. Similarly, I thank staff for great work.
And I will vote I as well, and I also thank you for all the good work. This is an important project, and we definitely want to see this happening annually. I think it's a powerful tool. It's a great way that we, we bring value to the whole process, so. So thank you, the I's have it five zero. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Thank you, Mr. Berlage. Mr. Hunt, is there any further business before us today?
Chair, there are no additional items before the board today.
Thank you. Then, Commissioner, without objection, we are. I want to thank everybody for their time on this fine day, and I look forward to seventy-degree weather tomorrow for some weird reason.
I know. Unbelievable.
It's about time.
There you go. Take care.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.